He's not planning on turning it off and calling again, right?
You're good to go.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So, we are, as I said, back to our regular meeting. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hi. Thank you, Matt. So DES mandate for Brookside Lane. Who is speaking to that?
Well, the owners of the property are here.
Good.
And as I -- they have -- the DES has told us that we need to provide them with potable -- portable water?
Potable, yep.
Okay. And I spoke with the owners. They already have a reverse osmosis system in their kitchen sink.
That's lucky.
Which should help with that. And they also have some kind of filtering system for a point of entry. So I asked them here to maybe help describe what they have and see if they're comfortable with what they have already.
So if the owners of Brookside Lane could step up to the podium?
Hi there. I'm Carolyn McTaggs. My husband Wayne Trevin. We did get a call last week saying that you guys would be providing us water at some point, but I know that the last -- at least the last water sample that was taken was not taken after the filter. It's all pre-filter.
Okay.
Pre-treatment, I should say. So I don't know if that makes any difference to --
Yes.
I mean, basically, it might as well be a puddle in the backyard from what I can understand. It's all totally pre-treatment because there's a valve on the inside of our house that keeps the spigots on the outside from using that system. And we do have a small RO system, but just to the kitchen sink.
Okay. So you have a filtration system that you believe makes your water potable for the inside of the property. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yep.
Okay. So I suppose we could have it tested for the internal. And if they agree, that's fine. If not, the other thing would be is if you feel that your water is potable and you do not need -- we would want something saying that you declined the water from the town.
We'd like it tested.
You would like it tested? Okay, good.
You know, it's a big deal if --
Well, absolutely. That's why DES had provided you with water.
Right, right. And we appreciate that. But we're not in a position to say yea or nay to accepting the potable water yet, just because, I mean, if we accept it, then basically it puts a burden on the town, you know, until the next millennium. If we don't accept it, that could be bad if we made a bad decision. The reverse osmosis that we have has a spigot in the sink. Reverse osmosis machine itself is down in the basement. The water that comes out of that -- both of us have worked with water before professionally with dialysis people. And the water that comes out of reverse osmosis is usually pretty, I mean, almost pure H2O. But we need to have it tested post-reverse osmosis.
Okay.
I was just going to mention, when Mindy came and we were talking about the PIFAs issue, everyone said, "What do we need?" And she said reverse osmosis and some kind of carbon filter.
Activated carbon filter.
Yeah, an activated carbon. So it's not -- once you do that, you -- but yes, definitely get it tested, but --
Well, there's actually deionizers some people use if you want to polish the water and make it super clean. We don't have a deionizer on our water. We use Comac, and they've advised us with their suggestions of what we should use. And they're hopefully going to be getting us some water samples in addition. We need multiple water samples. We needed pre-treatment, meaning before the usual domicile water treatment. And we needed pre-treatment, and then we needed post-RO so that we can see where we started and where we ended up. Did it work?
I do have just one more question. We just moved here recently. Do we have any idea why our house is the only one that seems to be being sampled once a year? Is there the whole neighborhood, or is it --
I know the PIFAs standards changed, right? They just -- Tom, you might know. I don't want to bring you into it.
That was very recent. The standards just changed.
Is this our --
Yeah, they had a PIFAs reading in their water.
You're near Dougway Road, right?
I'm sorry?
You're near Dougway Road.
Yeah, you're near the dump. They were often --
Yeah, hey.
We're near Dougway Road. We're neighbors to the dump.
And that's why your water is tested. You're not the only property that gets tested.
We're not, okay.
Oh, that's my misunderstanding. I thought we were the only property, which didn't make any sense.
Now, the people who test us routinely -- well, they've done it three springs in a row. We've only been here a few years. And is Gillespie?
Yes. That is correct.
All right.
Gillespie is doing the testing for the town.
And can I say, over the past three or four years, they've all received letters on that road to have their water tested, and many of them didn't reply. So I know two, four, and now three is being tested. Two, I think, is okay, but three and four will continue to be tested.
Well, the ones who aren't testing are playing guts ball with their health. You know, it's a -- water contamination is a serious problem.
As you also know, the standards have continued to decrease in tolerable particles.
Good.
I know that the school districts are having -- in this area of New Hampshire are having major problems with the changes that --
Yeah, they made a huge decrease to the PFAS tolerances.
Thanks to Tom Sherman over there. He did. He led the committee.
School districts are seeing having to rip out water supply lines because there's no way with copper lines you can actually reach the standards that have now been set.
So they turn them off.
All right. So I do think that if the board agrees that it would rehove us to have Gillespie do some additional testing based on the information about your reverse osmosis and your carbonization, so before we start looking into perpetually providing water.
We don't want it any more than you do personally. What would be the timeframe, do you think, to have the testing done? Is it before the --
We'll have to contact them and work that out, and then notify you and, you know, work it out.
Probably as soon as we can.
Probably we can get in touch with Gillespie, and they can contact you, and you two work something up.
Okay, fantastic.
And are we talking about doing post-RO?
Yes.
We're talking about doing post-RO?
Yes.
Plus, in the future, what they had done, which was pre-treatment?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So they're going to -- essentially, then, they're going to do two testings for us a year?
At least for now. I don't know if it'll be a continuous thing, because if the initial test shows that it really didn't make a difference and you still need potable water, then it wouldn't make sense to continue to --
Depending on the circumstances.
That would be a question for Gillespie to, you know, find out, because I know right now we only test in April.
Right.
No, he meant a test of the pre-reverse osmosis versus the post.
But that's what I'm saying. He should probably talk with Gillespie, and we'll talk with Gillespie too.
Okay. But the goal is to try to have them do it pre-treatment and post?
Yes, yes.
Right, to test the water from both locations, pre and post.
Yes.
Correct. That would be the goal. So if we can continue to just test and monitor, it would obviously be a cost savings to the town rather than just providing water. But, you know, if we -- if you need water, then we're going to give you water.
Well, you seem to have a filtration that they would have advised to put in the house.
And for those who may be watching or listening, the whole reason we're talking about potentially providing water to this property is because they are essentially butters to the municipal landfill, which means it is a town responsibility of contamination if there is some, so.
Thank you.
We may want to look at adding an additional line item to the budget so that we have funds if something like this comes up.
And we can discuss that during our budget discussions. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So glad you have a filter.
All right. So our next item for our construction manager, the fire rescue station.
Good evening, Board. Mike Povero, construction manager, Eastern Seaboard, Newton Fire Station. You should have copies of Carter's contract. You can review them and probably okay that, that we sign that contract. Short summary of where we are, and I know the selectmen know it. Brian Carter is a new contractor we're bringing on board because our previous contractor has been non-responsive, the sprinkler contractor. So Brian's given us a quote to do the sprinkler work. Based upon Brian's quote and some variables, and like we talked about the last meeting, we won't know them particularly until we sign the contract. He does the engineering on it and can rule in or out some of the stuff that he has put in his contract there. One is the biggest one for at least the outcome of the total project cost is how many gallons of water we're going to have to put underground. I think you see a line item there. He's put it between 30 or 32 and 20 or something like that. So he's put a pretty big window of what we might have to add to what we already have up there. So until that's designed, I can't give you a number, a hard number. I can tell you this, based upon what you have in front of you, we're going to be about $257,000 to $250,000. And if the gallons go up to the $30,000, you might be breathing hard on $290,000. So if you review that, I don't know if you review it now, review it tomorrow, get back to Diane.
Was this $290? The $290 includes the second page, 1 to 8?
Yeah, some of the items on this.
Some of them.
Yeah.
So they --
Because some of those, the first contractor had in his quote, and Carter does not have him there. So we've got a sample bent out with some of the other subs to pick that up. But the $290 is for the structure, the tanks, the electrical fire alarm system that has to be added to the building, because it's all an independent building.
Because you're saying $290 kind of for this stage of the project, cradle to grave, $290?
I thought it was like we could --
And I'm not trying to be vague, but best guess.
Right.
Until he does his hard design, and obviously, he's not going to do his design until we bring him on board.
Yeah.
I get it.
Because basically, what we're looking at in front of us here is a base price of $122,000 with the add-ins. Could make that go up. You're saying $290?
Not much.
If that is what it --
If that number stays good, and we don't have to put the --
The water.
The additional water to 30 or 32,000 gallons, we should be around $257,000 to $250,000.
Yeah, okay.
And the other people have disappeared for good, right? They're gone?
Pretty much. I still haven't heard from them since that meeting we had a month ago.
All right. So you are looking for the board to sign me? Actually, it doesn't look like a --
Well, no. I mean, again, you guys, I mean, it's your decision, but we had this conversation. You want me to sign it as a construction manager?
Yeah.
I don't have any problem doing that. I've done that through the whole project.
Right.
Where it becomes a slippery slope is, you guys got to make sure you've got the funds to do this project, because if I sign that document, my name's the only name on the document. So Carter Sprinkler is going to be looking for payment, and I'm going to -- I don't know. I'm coming up a little late to cover that.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the numbers, and to go back to that, construction manager should be signing with the subs, as it has done all along. Should also have you do a change order, I think, under the contract terms.
Mm-hmm.
To, you know, get it all on paper. We have been looking at the funds, I think strictly from the sprinkler side of things. As far as Carter, the sprinkler sub here, I think in the bond, we have enough to cover that, and the construction manager fee might be a little -- put us a little less there. The board's going to have to look at the other places that we're going to take money from, and, you know, as we get closer to the end of the year, some of this work might not actually be performed until 2020, right? Depending on --
No, I think honestly, depending on how fast he comes up with his design, and then how fast we see the lead times on the pumps and some of the long lead items, this may not be done until midsummer of next year, before the --
So we get a -- where I'm going with that is we have to look at encumbrances in the board, because my intention is not, nor do I think we need to ask people to dip into their pockets again. I think we have the funds. We just have to, like I said, encumbrances, move some money around in some of our general government and buildings work that we would have done in 2019. We have to push out if it's not a major emergency.
Or we could also need to look at other budgets.
In other budgets.
That may have areas that they haven't expended.
I guess what I'm saying is, any of this, and we can discuss offline what all the requirements are for encumbrances, but any of this that we identify that wouldn't come under the bond, because the bond doesn't matter. We could do that next year, the year after, or whatever. Anything that's not going to come under the bond budget, we have to look at what we need to do paperwork-wise to encumber it into 2020, is what I'm saying. But Kim can help us with that.
I do have one question for you. We never got a quote as far as an expected cost for the sprinkler system, once it was identified that we actually needed a different sprinkler system, correct? So we don't have any idea what we were looking at for a cost with the previous engineers, architects, whatever they're --
For Breen and Sullivan?
Right.
No, we had one.
We did?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That was probably May. We had one from Breen and Sullivan.
And how is this in comparison to what we got for --
These percentages higher. It's within, I think it's $17,000 within the original Breen and Sullivan quote. But the gray area is, Breen and Sullivan's engineers came up with a certain design that they priced their number off of. I can't tell you that Carter's engineers are going to come up with the same design. You would logically think they would, but they look at it differently. Hydro loss and piping and all the rest of the stuff, different pumps. One guy goes with a bigger pump, which is more money. It's a game that they come up with, how they supply those heads and how the engineers design it. So from the get-go, we might not be talking apples and apples.
Okay.
At the end of the day, you have a compliant sprinkler system that's acceptable by the state fire marshal, but how they get there could be two different roads.
But right now, we're looking at -- the ballpark was close.
About $17,000 increase.
Talking about a couple of hundred thousand dollars, $17,000 isn't a major difference.
No, no. He was pretty close.
But that's with the lower number, right, of $257,000?
That's with the lower number.
Yeah, with $290,000, you're looking at --
But the $290 is -- the $290 difference is how many gallons of water we have to put underground.
Right.
And I won't know that until -- because Breen and Sullivan's guy came up with $19,500.
Which hopefully is right.
And he might be.
Okay.
And he might be, and we might be okay, but you've got to be aware that there is a variable until that design is done.
Yep, okay. And just as someone new to the game, like in part, the second part in items one through eight, is it normal customary that they have no -- I mean, that's a big spread. That's like no estimates there?
On items?
Is that customary? You know, prices, the do not include list of one to eight?
Yeah, a lot of guys will --
Is that pretty normal?
Yeah, well, it's not uncommon, just different guys. Like, they don't have cranes. I've got to supply the cranes and so forth to do certain aspects of their job. Some sprinklers may have cranes. So it depends what they have for equipment and what they don't, so they'll exclude it or include it.
So can we, now that we -- I realize they're not hard numbers, but they're a little more in focus, the numbers. Can we ask Kim to do a little exercise in Microsoft Excel, basically taking what she sent us this morning, which was all the kind of available funds in the areas we talked about with her, and kind of start putting some of these numbers against it? Granted that they're in pencil, they're not in pen, but we can start to get an idea of where we're going to have to potentially take from and potentially look at encumbering.
Well, he gave us a whole ballpark number, which is not inclusive. I mean, the numbers we have listed here does not include that whole ballpark.
Yeah, I would say $290,000. Use that as the ballpark to, like I said, don't do anything in pen. It's all in pencil. And it's all in Excel, actually.
In the meantime, in order to cover our construction manager, I would move that we authorize the chair to sign a change order for the new proposal for the sprinkler system once it's been prepared.
Can I second that with a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Sprinkler system, fire pump design, I think, is what we --
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Description.
Yeah.
So we have a motion from Jim, seconded by Matt. Any further discussion, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That way, you write up the change order, I sign it, and then you can do your thing.
Then so we wait for the change order until I sign that thing to Carter?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
But that'll cover you. It'll cover us.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I have no problem with that.
Okay, good.
Can I squeeze one more item in here?
Yes, you may, since you were so patient with us this evening.
It's not patience, I just, lack of time is what it is. This is regarding the paving for the 2019 season.
Okay.
Scheduled, and it's been --
So can you introduce yourself?
That's right, ma'am. Mike Povero, Newton Road Agent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what was scheduled on road upgrades this year is Thornel. Oddly enough, it's the worst one we have, so that worked out well. I'm looking to repair the section closest to Route 108, probably 1,800 feet. Brock's came in with the lowest paving quote they have the past number of years. They beat everybody by probably $20, $25 a ton, which is a good number, big spread, The work is going to cost roughly, bear with me, about $140,000. That's from some drainage upgrades at 108 where it floods and it ices up, and then to reclaim and repave that section of Thornel. I've got some technical issues that have been trying to work out for the past month, which we have two high-pressure gas lines that run through that road. And the gas companies are pretty, rightly so, panicky, because those are major distribution lines that go down there. So I have to still work out logistics and engineering approvals and everything else before we go in there and start disturbing anything and make sure it's there okay. The funds, most of the funds will come out of the highway block grant. Right now, on the block grant, we have $240,771,91. And then I always use up my $35,000, which is a line item, under the highway budget. So there's more than adequate funds. We won't come anywhere near exhausting those funds, and that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
That's what I like to hear.
Excellent.
Making good use of the block fund, the block grant fund.
Thank God we have them, because we wouldn't get anything done without them.
Right. And that's it for us?
That's it for me.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Do you guys make a motion to allow Brock's to pay? Normally, you accept the bid, right, Mike? Don't they normally make a motion to accept the bid for Brock's?
For Brock's? I'll move to accept the motion for Brock's to do the paving.
Second?
Seconded by Matt. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You're good.
Just in case.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night. Okay. Our next item is our -- to still do with the rescue station is the certificate of occupancy. It's going to be more of just an announcement than any discussion. As many people know, there was a temporary certificate of occupancy issued for the new fire station by our own building inspector, who the -- it expired August 30, 2019. Our current building inspector has issued essentially a renewal or a new temporary certificate of occupancy for a period of 90 days, effective 9/13/2019. And he is prepared to extend these temporary certificates of occupancies as needed until the sprinkler system is completed. Anybody have anything else they would like to add? All right, then we will move on. Transfer station, tractor tires, and snow plow.
Pete Gaggen, transfer station. You guys have the quotes in front of you.
Just to be aware, transfer station manager.
Transfer station manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll start with the tires first. I have three quotes, three basically different prices. I would like to go with the middle of the three. Upon some research, the Galaxy Easy Riders are actually a fairly decent tire that hold up well to travel where the treads don't tend to break apart, whereas the higher-end BKTs do have a tendency to do that. That's where I'd like to go. I'd like to get your input on it.
Okay. And the funds for these tires?
Are coming out of the --
Fund from the Warren article?
From the Warren article that was written last year. There's still plenty of funds in there to cover these and the plow.
All right. And we need new tires, because the other one, this was a used tractor, so the tires were already somewhat worn to begin with, correct?
Yeah, there's some tread. One of them has a slow leak. I have to keep putting air in it and might as well get it done before the winter season comes in.
Just looking to explain why we're looking at purchasing new tires, so. And what are we looking at for cost for these?
The ones I would like are about, let's see, I believe it's about $1,800, and that's for the tires themselves and for them to come out and change everything.
Is that the --
$1,812. So that's road service and tires, and we would dispose of the tires ourselves.
At the dump?
At the transfer station.
That's --
Transfer station.
And we're talking four tires?
Two tires, two tires.
Four? Two tires.
Yeah.
The front ones or the back ones?
Rear.
Okay. So the big ones?
Yes, the big ones, yes.
All right. Again, just making sure people understand what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
When we start saying $1,800, you know, they may be thinking about their car tires that only cost them a couple hundred bucks, so.
Yeah, no. The front ones are, the front tires have a lot of life left on them, so we're good with those.
Pete, is that Stratum Tire that you're looking at?
Yes, that was Stratum Tire.
All right. And because it's coming out of the Warren article, does the board need -- to approve?
You should.
Okay.
Move to purchase the truck tires from Stratum Tire for the transfer station tractor.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. And your next item, Pete?
The plows. I only have two quotes here. I was not able to get a third for you, but it's clear which one that I would prefer to go to is the one from Chapel Tractor. It's a 10-foot Protec snow plow for $3,899.
Does that include installation?
Or it just comes to us?
Or does it just plug into whatever's already there?
Plug and play.
Okay.
Yep, yep. The other, sorry?
All right, I don't want to be premature on the move. Again, we need to discuss the costs, and what is it about the other one that kind of made it not?
Yeah, the other one, it's a 12-foot plow, which is a little bit more than what I've been told my machine should handle. It could, but it shouldn't. And then it's the price tag attached to it, which is $6,249.
And what's the price tag of the 10-foot one?
The $3,899.
So you're talking almost twice as much for two feet?
Exactly.
Okay.
And it's the same thing, plug and play. It's just, I think it's the brand name is what we would be paying for.
Is this for the tractor?
Yes.
Yes.
What's the matter with the loader? How it works better?
Yeah, it would be able to do it much quicker. That's what the road crew does during the wintertime. They use their big pusher and come in and, you know, it costs us money if we could do it ourselves. It'd pay for itself in a couple of years.
Right?
Right.
All right, so...
Madam Chair, I would move that we buy the 10-foot snow pusher from Chapel Tractor.
I second the motion.
All right, any further discussion?
Can we put the dollar amount in that warrant, in that motion?
Yeah, for the $3,000...
$8,899.
90 or 99?
99.
Thank you.
All right.
Should be paid out of the warrant.
You still second that?
So you second the amendment? All right, so all in favor?
Both of those contain the words "to be paid from the, monies from the warrant."
Okay, so friendly amendment to be paid from the funds from the warrant article. You second that? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, Pete. Anything else for us, or are you done?
That's it.
All right. You have a good evening.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
All right, review storm water management plan, which is not the illicit discharge. Now, has everyone had a chance to review the storm water management plan? All right, anybody have any questions, concerns, anything like that? If not, then let me just...
Move to sign and submit.
Do I have a second on that?
Check it.
Wait, what Nancy?
What Nancy?
I think the warrant article needs to have the meat of what you're voting on and to just to approve and submit. That doesn't tell Kim what the warrant, what the motion is that you're making.
Are we back on the tractor?
I think he's on the storm water thing.
Yeah, storm water management plan. I've got a cover page and I've got a signature page. I got nothing in the middle.
I didn't print it out in case you didn't accept it.
Did you mention the warrant article?
No, not the warrant article, the motion. If you're gonna make a motion, you need to put the meat in the motion, so Kim will know what you're voting on.
So what is it a...
Move to sign the illicit discharge...
No, this is the storm...
Sorry, the storm water management plan and submit it.
Okay, that's better.
Seconded by Larry. Any discussion on the storm water management plan? All in favor? Aye. All right, our next item is the illicit discharge detection and elimination plan. And everyone had a chance to review that as well, which, by the way, these are related to the bylaw that we just approved, just so people know. So now that we've approved that ordinance, we now have our plans to go along with it. Everyone had a chance to review that as well, correct? All right, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt the IDDEP.
Second.
All right, so the motion is to adopt the plan as written. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Just for anyone viewing, will these plans be available online? They've been on...
They have been online.
They're still there.
Yeah, they're still there. They'll continue to be there. Anyone can go on and look at it anytime they want. We got all kinds of good info on the website. People just have to go and look.
Can we sometimes squeeze the guy instead of making him wait to the end? He's only one minute.
He's Friends of Newton Recreation?
Yeah.
Okay, Friends of Newton Recreation, we're gonna move you up. How's that?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
He's one of our new firefighters, by the way.
Well, welcome to town, thank you.
Thank you very much. Edwin Gronnik, Friends of Newton, New Hampshire Recreation. Tonight, I first want to thank you for your time. Tonight I'm here to discuss about a fundraiser we're gonna be hosting on October 5th from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. We'd like your permission to use the fire station. The fundraiser's gonna involve the 2018 Red Sox World Series Trophy, and all funds donated that day will go towards the Greeny Park Project. And at this time, we've discussed logistics with the fire chief, but we would like your permission to use the fire station. We will have a certificate of insurance that's gonna be presented to, I believe, Diane one week before the event.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you consider using the town hall?
We did not. We were gonna use either the elementary school, we kind of were looking at the elementary school or the fire station, just because of kind of parking and location for people.
I'll jump in here. I suggested it for parking.
Okay, yeah.
I agree.
So yes, that's...
Kind of went down the list and...
Yeah.
And the chief said good, right?
Yeah, chief's good, as long as, you know, we definitely wanted to present it to you as well, just so you are good with it as well.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go on the record. I applaud what you're doing. I have nothing against the fundraiser. I personally would prefer to see it at the school or in town hall. I have said it before, I will say it again today, I am not in favor of using the fire department, the fire station as a rec hall.
Okay.
But I am one person.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to allow the Newton Friends Rec to use the fire station on October 5th from 3:00 to 5:00.
Second.
Is it 3:00 to 5:00 or 2:00 to 5:00?
3:00 to 5:00.
3:00 to 5:00. Okay, thank you.
One of the things that I was thinking, I mean, we're talking about parking. Would it, is it possible that they could do something in one of the bays of the Butler Building versus...
Nah, that's so dirty and...
It's gross.
The Red Sox would be very mad at you.
Yeah, they would, if they drove up and saw that.
Did you say Newton Recreation?
Friends of Newton Recreation.
Okay, thank you.
As long as the fire chief is capable of the logistics of...
Well, we gotta remember, the people pay for a station with their taxpayers' money, they like to use it. And every time it comes up, we keep saying no, and we gotta start saying yes.
However, the people paid for a fire station, not for a rec hall.
Right, but this is specifically for our recreation, Friends of our Recreation Committee.
Build them a rec hall, then.
Right, well, there's...
There's a second on the board.
So if we are all done discussing the use of the fire station, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nay. But you know why I'm not opposed to the idea, just the location.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next item is impact fee. The letter...
Do you want to speak on that, Jim?
Okay, we've been having some interesting correspondence with the school district regarding the, trying to pay in our impact fee, which I believe, Nancy, correct me, is supposed to be submitted by September 30th?
September 1st.
Oh, you're late.
No, I'm not late. Normally I give the board a letter to sign saying this is how much of the impact fees we've collected for this year. It goes to the school, but in order to send the checks to the school, I need a letter from them saying the bond amount for the apportioned, Newton's apportioned bond amount is this. I reached out to the business administrator over there and was told that he's decided he's going to look into the equalized portion of the impact fees between Newton and Kingston. So I sent him an email and suggested that maybe he reach out to Bruce Mayberry, because he did Kingston's as well as ours. And I got an email back saying I'm very well-versed in impact fees and blah, blah, blah. And he did say he would be doing a analysis, and I kind of said, well, it's kind of late for that. We need to get this in for this year's tax rate. And I got another email back that wasn't so kind, and he said he'd be done at the end of last week, and I haven't heard a word. So I can't prepare the letter, because I don't have the backup documentation, and I'm holding the checks that should be going to... So Jim, I talked to Jim. He reached out to the superintendent, and I guess he didn't get much leadway either. So I don't know what we're doing. My question is, once...
Should we have Chair to Chair have a conversation?
What?
Chair of our board to Chair of their board have a conversation?
It's at least to find out what we're doing.
You can try.
What I would like to do, if we can possibly get the letter, I can prepare my letter to them, give them the checks, but I would need the board to sign the letter. So if I can get that prepared, maybe...
I suggest to Nancy that we can take last year's letter, take it, even using last year's numbers, at least we will have submitted our documents.
Yeah, but I don't have the apportioned portion from the school saying what our apportioned amount is.
Yeah, we received one of those last year.
It changes every year.
I realize this, but it's the...
But we, and you're looking to file this with the Department of Revenue?
No, well, it goes to the school as part of our impact fees for the school portion, our portion. Then he puts it on his stuff to DRA for the tax rate setting. But, you know, I have auditors that double-check what we're doing and what we're proposing, and I've got a hefty check, and I don't feel comfortable submitting it without that backup documentation from the school.
So they tell us what the impact fee apportion is?
I'm not sure. We know what our portion is, but according to his email, Kingston isn't equalized with Newton, and he wanted to do a study.
Well, then, if we know what our portion is, I say we do up the letter and we send it to them.
I asked him if he could still send me the letter that I requested, and he said, no, I'm not gonna violate the RSA. Well, he did say no. He says, I'm not violating the RSA. So to me, that was no.
How is that in violation of the RSA? And which RSA is he afraid of being in violation of?
I don't know.
Okay, again, I'm back to, I think maybe Chair and Chair needs to have a conversation.
I can give you the emails that I've received and sent to him, and maybe you could talk to him and just let him know. I mean, everything's supposed to be in by September 1st. And I know we're always waiting, and I explained if we don't get everything in, we can't set our tax rate.
Now, you said this is a letter you send to the school district.
I have a letter that the board signs that goes with the check, but he has to give me the school's apportioned bond amount, I think that's what you call it, to go with what I'm sending him. And I've got it from years and years and years back, and this year I'm waiting to get one.
And we need that in order to set our tax rate for the December 1st bills?
Well, it's part of the school's setting of the tax rate. Our portion goes, it lowers our tax rate.
Right, but it's still, when we set our tax rate December 1st, that school apportionment...
We set, yeah, we set the tax rate hopefully in October.
I say Chair calls the Chair, and if that doesn't work, we do have three, Newton representatives on the school board, right? We still have representation of the school board.
I was just gonna say, would you like me to call the Chair, only because I know the Chair?
So do I.
Oh, okay.
Which is why I was okay with contacting the Chair.
Okay, I'm just offering, because I would be on the phone first thing in my mind.
Well, I can give you the emails tonight that I have. I have it in my folder, and then maybe you could just contact them.
Thank you, yeah. I think it needs to, you know, just carry some weight, Chair to Chair. And that's all I'm thinking. Equal to equal. So, board agree?
Agree.
All right, so Nancy, if you can provide me with the email correspondence back and forth, and then I will reach out and see what we can do to make headway on this.
Yep, it's just not a good time to be analyzing it. It should have been done way before now.
Yeah.
All right, so our next item, signed contract with Suburban Propane for 2019-2020, or approved to sign the contract, I should say. I mean, we have a contract for Suburban Propane. This is for the 2019 to 2020 season to provide us with our fuel oil for heating.
Probably chosen at the last meeting.
You did, but you need to sign it.
We did, but we need to sign the contract.
Move to have the Chair sign the contract with Suburban Propane.
For the 2019-2020 agreement.
2019-2020 fuel heating season.
All right, seconded by Larry.
There were three contracts.
Yeah.
One for propane, one for underground.
Oh, I thought it was just three signatures.
So we're getting the oil first.
And one for...
So, yeah, heating oil, underground tank.
It's the underground tank.
Did it just say the 2019-2020 heating?
Yeah, it's saying we are responsible for it, not them.
And we own those tanks.
And then the propane gas. So propane gas, heating oil, and the...
Okay, so while we're sending that motion, first I'll ask the Chair to sign the propane...
Hold on. Hey, it's got a question.
That's something, so you'll see this contract, we only need 5,000. Don't worry, I'm going, it's up for 6,500 gallons, right? Then there's an email addendum saying, no, we never charge for, we don't use, and we apply to next year's contract, assuming we sign with them again, which is a little different than what we heard. And I think this contract, we need to specify it. Wait, where did it go here?
You're talking about the years?
Yeah, where it says, customer understands and agrees the quantity, shall not be modified. Okay, here it says that the market costs may blah, blah, blah. Okay, great. We have relied on judgment entering to this agreement. In the event the customer does not take delivery under this agreement during the period, customer acknowledges it will not be entitled to a credit or refund for the undelivered gallons. So we, like, the part in the email saying, oh, don't worry, it should be somehow in this contract. This doesn't protect us, that's what worries me.
But we have the email from her, which is, should count for that.
I was just gonna say, you print out that email, you staple it to the back of the contract.
Yeah. Okay, it's good, as long as that's attached, and then, and we initial it. Okay, good.
I stated, so, you know, this is what's gonna happen if...
And then the only thing that worries me too is, let's say, that's gonna inhibit our bid for, well, actually with the bombing now, oil prices are going way up with what happened right now, so maybe it will be a good thing that we're only at 1,500 gallons next year at that price. But it might inhibit ultimately our ability to have bids out next year, but if we go over.
Does it finish your motion?
Just want that on the record.
Not yet.
Before you make the motion, there's...
There's four things to sign, by the way.
Oh, four?
Yeah, I see all these pages.
Can I have this, like, make the motion?
Yes. It's just, the bottom one doesn't have a sign here, but there is a signature on...
So on one of those, is like that little pink tab?
Yes.
That is the year. I would suggest you change that to one year, or two years, whichever you want to do. That's contracted for three years, but she said you could change that. Wait, what?
So the contract is for one year, two year, or three year? That means, is there an escape clause in that contract?
That would be the one-year clause. That's why she's saying to put the one-year...
Then it has to be for one year.
And just initial it.
Okay, and just, is it the same agreement with propane? Because this is a little more than our use, the propane, they're doing 5,000 gallons of propane. I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me. Is it the same thing?
I'm not sure what the question is.
Okay, it says here, so first we read 6,500 of oil, and then the email specifically mentions, don't worry, thanks, the oil you can, you know, we won't, we're gonna give it to you for next year.
Yeah, it's for both, oil and propane.
And it's for propane, the same agreement for propane, which really is gonna end up roping us into two years, but these are good prices, too, so...
But we need an escape clause.
Oh, totally, so if we get one year-
It's now been reduced to one year, we do not need an escape clause.
Exactly, she's just saying if it-
If we have an extra 2,500 gallons of oil that we haven't used, and we have a one-year contract, they're gonna give us, they said, we'll give it to you the next year.
They'll put that towards the next year, correct?
Only if we sign with them, right?
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make that clear.
Right, but we can enter another one-year agreement with them, next year.
Yeah, as long as that won't undo that.
You know, and if everything works out well, then we probably will. However, we cannot enter into more than one-year agreement without an escape clause in that contract.
Exactly.
Just wanted to go away with that, no, you don't get your oil.
All right, so it was mod-
Madam Chair, I would move to have the Chair sign the underground tank agreement with Suburban Propane.
All right, seconded by Matt. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I would move to have the Chair sign the commercial propane gas sales agreement with Suburban Propane.
Second?
Second.
Matt got it first, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I would move that the Chair sign the dispute resolution procedures addendum to residential and commercial propane service agreements with Suburban Propane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Madam Chair, I would move that we have the Chair sign the attachment to a commercial propane gas sales agreement, fixed price agreement with Suburban Propane. The quantity shall be fixed at $1.31.5 per ga, second, per gallon.
All right, seconded by Larry.
Wait, what? Diane?
Where's the oil one?
It's you.
Oh, you didn't-
He didn't name the oil price.
He didn't name the oil prices when he did the oil one.
Okay, all right.
That one was, that one was obvious.
Okay.
And since it's a fixed price agreement, I think we should mention the fixed price.
$2.48 per gallon for oil.
Right.
That was for propane that he was just talking about.
And the propane was a dollar thirty?
I was going back because he didn't listen.
And Larry, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm so confused.
All right, so that's all signed. Our next item up, an update on the RPC electricity aggregation matrix and sample contract.
Right, you received the sample contract and the RPC calculations of what entering into the electricity aggregation through the RPC would save the town. It's approximately-
Good night.
Entering into this agreement should save us approximately $6,500 on the three years.
Oh, three years, but still.
It is a three-year contract, and that was-
And is there an escape clause? If not, it has to go on the ballot.
I've gone through it twice. I was hoping that somebody else would have maybe read it.
I had password issues.
You're talking about the sample contract?
Right. The problem is, is that the this is a one-day offer, regrettably. This is what the Constellation Energy Supplier is offering us, provided the contract is signed on the 25th of September. Remember, this is purely for the electricity. It doesn't, it does not include the, we will still get a bill from Unitil because that covers the-
Yeah, there's two different fees.
Yeah, there are two different aspects of the bill. This is simply on the energy cost.
Supply itself, but not the delivery, right? Unitil does the delivery, they're doing the supply, so to speak.
Right.
I'm not seeing an escape clause, anybody else?
For some reason, mine comes up blank. When I click on it, I try again.
There is an escape clause, you see?
No.
There's none.
You weren't right about this.
Where is it, please?
It's on, if you look on the second page, under term, and then you go down about halfway, it says, insert holdover rate. You see that? And it says, second line after that, it says, either party may terminate the holdover term at any time within its discretion, at which time we will drop each account as of the next possible meter read date to the then applicable tariff service in Wariwa.
So it may be, it may be canceled by either party-
Correct.
-at any time.
Correct.
That's an escape clause.
Yeah.
With, does it say no penalties, or with penalties, or anything like that?
It says, to then applicable tariff service, whether service, whether default service or otherwise, upon expiration of this agreement to the extent no renewal or new contract has been executed by the parties, Constellation shall use commercially reasonably efforts, reasonable efforts to move all active accounts back to UDC for next billing cycle following such expiration. But I don't think it says anything like that.
All right, so we need to know if there's somewhere else in the agreement where it says, you know, if there's any early termination penalties or anything like that.
I mean, I think I'd be in favor of a motion to sign this with a stipulation that we have Town Council just give it a once-over. So in other words, if he comes back in a few days and doesn't see anything shocking about it, we just have the Chair sign it. I'm thinking out loud, and then I'm gonna make a motion, if people sound in favor of it, so.
Yeah, because we can't be putting it off for too long, or we'll lose the window to-
Exactly, so I would, I would move to, we have to notify RPC by Monday. They're gonna have to work with us, I think, is what I'm com-
The 25th is a drop dead date. We're either in or out.
Then find somebody else, I would say. If they want our business, then they have to work with us.
Well, do you think we would, today's only the 17th.
Yeah.
Right.
That's eight days.
Call Sumner tomorrow, it's a paragraph you have to look at.
I think that's enough time for, you know, if we ask Sumner to get back to us before then, so that the Chair can sign and get it, we can have it delivered.
One would think, but-
Now, if, if the, he can't, then we lose that window.
Right.
But I, I'm good with, you know, saying, okay, let's
Call Sumner.
Potentially have the motion to sign after review by Sumner, and to deliver by the 25th. Then if it isn't delivered, then the whole motion becomes moot.
Get ready, this will be a long one. All right, so I move to have the Chair sign the agreement by the 25th of September.
On the 25th.
On the 25th.
No, by, by is good.
Doesn't bother me either way. So we can vote on by or on, but it's September 25th, with the stipulation that it'll be sent out to Town Council for review of the escape clause factor. And I think that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? I did say by as opposed to on because we would want me to sign it up to, including the 25th, and then having it delivered.
No, 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 it's gonna be signed electronically because those, everything will be filled in on the 25th. It's a 24-hour.
Right, so let's-
They're gonna fill it out first thing on the 25th. We have until like 3 a.m., 3, 3 p.m. to sign it.
That's not a 24-hour window.
They consider it a 24-hour because it's all done in one day.
3 a.m. to-
That's stupid. Isn't the school doing this too?
They would have to be 3 p.m. to 3 p.m. to be a 24-hour window.
Did somebody second me?
Yeah.
Larry seconded me.
They keep calling it a one-day window. I threw in 24 hours.
Doesn't matter about the signature date, date.
No.
Let's just get Sumner to look it over.
Yeah.
Pass the motion.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 You worry about the signature date? No, I'm not.
Okay, you're an aye, okay, so it's unanimous.
So the, the key thing that I said in there is, you know, just direct Sumner, where most, we're just concerned about that.
Escape clause.
Yeah, and whether, whether we're missing anything about the penalties or anything for escaping.
Yeah.
That's my concern.
And if he comes back with concerns, then what?
Chair with the board.
And it's dead in the water.
Yeah, then the Chair doesn't sign.
Okay.
And Jim, are we getting this rate because we're going in with the school and the whole area?
No, it doesn't, this doesn't include the school, Sam.
No, this is the Rockingham Planning Commission, not the school board.
Okay.
Okay, so I need to step back to our previous one. One of the motions that Jim had made was to sign the wrong document. So we had a motion to sign a dispute resolution procedures addendum. I would like to request a rescinding of that motion, if you don't mind? So that, so that we can actually have a motion to sign the heating oil fixed price agreement. That addendum was just part of the, but it was a little confusing because it was after the signed page.
The pages must have been stuck together because that was the-
Yep, so, like I said, I just want to make sure that we're signing the right thing, so.
No, not a problem.
So do I have a motion to rescind?
Move to rescind.
Okay, seconded by Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so there's no signing of a dispute resolution. The, Jim, just so you can see what we do want to sign.
I'll move to sign the heating oil fixed price agreement. At, this one doesn't list what the price, oh, sorry, $2.48 per gallon.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here we go. Okay, our next item. We have review of two Amesbury Road town expenditures. As we are all aware, the property was sold. We just got some numbers.
That's what we got back, the 49?
You can actually get back a little more.
A little more than 49?
Right.
When will we have the legal fees finalized?
Right, they're not, those are his estimates. So we're estimating $50,241.10. It may be more, maybe a little less. But we don't have, he has to put this out to the court, bring it to the court, and have it settled there.
So we can see that there are, and he would have to include what it would cost him to actually distribute these funds to wherever they need to be distributed to, whatever legal paperwork has to be done with that, the difference.
The court distributes it, right.
Right, but we give to the court, and the court distributes. Or we notify the court, and the court distributes, that's all.
That's, that's my understanding. Sumner did say in his email today, there may be things that we might be challenged on our expenses. But we've broken down that list. We wanted to make sure the board approved of what we've come up with. And then Sumner, I guess he has 60 days from the closing date when we settled, which was August 29th. So, and I told him if he needs anything else from us, to let us know. But we would, if the board approves, we'll send that over tomorrow and get the ball rolling.
And we're sending this over to who?
Sumner.
Okay.
He has to file the interpreter.
Yeah, that word.
That, there's something that he has to file with the court, a legal thing, yeah.
So silly question, we get a check, check goes to the general fund?
Yes, it's been deposited. And if they approve of our expenses, we'll give the difference to the court, or to Sumner for the court. And then they'll work out, getting in touch with anybody that has an interest in the property.
It goes into our unanticipated funds.
Exactly. Okay, so you just want approval to send-
We just wanted to make sure the board was aware of what we came up with. Because sometimes we come up with stuff, and somebody will say, hey, how about this, how about this? So we just figured we'd double check, make sure the board was okay with it.
So the only thing we need is that final bill from Sumner.
Well, he gave us an estimate of 1,200 for the filing. He says, there's no way to know how many notices they're gonna have to send out. He said, I think it's fair to go with like 1,200.
And since this is something we're sending to Sumner, it's got the legal fee estimate in it, he'll know how, you know, what to adjust it to.
Right, right.
So I, I'm good with that being the estimate and the rest of them being the final numbers.
Yeah, I assume Sumner's gonna give us a final accounting that, that we sign off on to send to the court.
So.
Well, that's what the 1,200 is.
You're gonna send this to Sumner, who put that into his thing to go to the court.
And he enters his plea, and that's what he thinks the price is gonna be. He said, at this point, he can't possibly give us an accurate number.
Right.
I'm sure it could be adjusted.
It's 1,400 because you already paid him 12, you already paid him 200.
For doing the deed, yeah.
We paid nothing to St. Jean?
Nope.
Now, the-
No, because they, that was paid directly by the buyer.
Well, I, I know that, but I just wanted to make sure there wasn't.
Nope, it was, we met our agreement with St. Jean, the, so they were paid directly by the buyer. There's nothing for us. All right, so I'm good with it. I don't think we need a motion to say, go ahead and send it, so go ahead and send it. Next, intent to cut timber, we have two of them. So these need to be signed. Anyone take a look at the intent to cut?
I just wanted to let the board know, I have not sent those to Conservation or Plan A Board. These have already been cut. And Andrea and I went after the filing of the intents. We've talked to the state. And there should be one other person that should be filing an intent, but right now, we have two.
I mean, this is cut-
On the right-hand side, like a 140 area?
South Maine, yes.
You're putting three houses there or something?
I think there's seven lots.
Seven, but he's doing-
You mean, they've already been cut, before the intent to cut?
So there's five acres, and they cut two acres of timber.
There was confusion.
That's all.
On South Maine.
There was confusion as to whether they had to pull the intent in talking with the state. They, they told them they need to file, and it-
So they're doing it?
Yeah, they, they've pulled the intent.
They didn't clear the lot, it's just, they just cut some.
Yeah, they took a bunch.
It's not leveled yet.
Figure out, if it's your lot, you're allowed to do that.
I noticed it's the same person who's responsible for the cut. Why isn't this guy telling you guys, file your notice?
Who's supposed to tell them that?
Lisa's asking the logger. Should know that.
Yeah, exactly, the loggers should know that.
So maybe, do we write him a note, a nice note?
Can we move on?
No, so basically, we just need to, I, I would really like to, you said they're already cut, right?
Yes.
All right.
And they have the weight slips and all that, so DRA will review all this stuff. Once you approve it, I'll sign it, I'll send it up to them.
So white pine, biomass chips, white pine, biomass chips. So they're claiming that's all they chopped down was white pine? Both of them?
We'll know when the logger files the report of cut.
Okay.
Because it could change.
But we're just approving a cut of white pine and biomass chips?
Correct. Just because I'm new, someone mentions Conservation Commission, should it have, should it have gone to them?
Conservation usually gets a copy, they like to be included as well as Plan A Board to have copies.
But they don't need to approve something like this?
No, they, they just wanna- If they had a concern, then they would come back to the board.
Yeah, the intent to cuts typically go to Conservation so that they can review and potentially do-
But that's before they cut.
Yeah, unfortunately.
At this stage of the game, Conservation can't stop anything if they do have a concern.
However, I would like to have a copy of these intent to cuts and send to Conservation so that they are aware.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Move to sign the intent to cut for tax map 14-1-4-1, 14-1-4-2, 13-3- sorry, 13-3-14.
All right, seconded by Matt, sorry, Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to sign the Intent to Cut for Tax MAP 13-3-12, 13-3-15, and 13-3-16.
Second.
We'll give that one to Larry, that was... All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, okay, any other business here? We have announcements. September 17th through the 23rd is Constitution Week. I'm not exactly sure what that means. How about you men? Do you know what that means?
That is a celebration of the Constitution.
According to who?
State or...
George Washington.
No, but I mean, who designated this Constitution Week?
I think it was the founding fathers.
Well, the Constitution is a big deal. We should celebrate it, but... Okay, I guess we're a little light on announcements this week, and that's why we've got this one. How about approval for minutes?
Don't forget your manifest and requisitions.
Yes, those are under my others, so...
Madam Chair, I move to approve the public and non-public minutes dated September 13th,